We're celebrating a centennial, 100 years here in Watts, of the Watts Towers and also of this incredible art center. Whether it's music, whether it's visual arts. You know, Watts isn't just one of the centers in Los Angeles. It is one of the capitals of the world of culture and of creativity.
Watts is very rich. Most people come down here looking for 1965. We're not 1965 anymore. We're very rich. There are more artists in all disciplines coming from the Watts area than anywhere else in Los Angeles.
We have many celebrations. It's 100-year anniversary of the Watts Towers. It's the 40th anniversary of the Watts Towers Drum Festival and the 45th anniversary of the Simon Rodea Watts Towers Jazz Festival.
It's the people, it's the music, it's the food, it's the... It's just nice and it's relaxing. You can just sit and relax and enjoy yourself.
For years, I couldn't come because I had to work. So I've been here the last, oh, four times they've had it. And I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed the drums. I just enjoyed the drums.
It just shows the malleableness of cultures, how cultures blend together. The brother that designed these Watts Towers was from Italy. He was an immigrant that came here from Italy. And he was a recycler before recycling was hip.
Uncle Sam, my Uncle Sam, Sabato Rodea. He created this magnificent, mysterious and unusual world monument right here in Watts, the Watts Towers.
It's a great day, more investment, more art, more people, and finally, we're back together.
Did you know that the city currently has four different types of recycling and trash bins? Blue, green, brown, and black. In presenting the launch of the Organic Ways Pilot Program, the L.A. sanitation department breaks down what items should go in each bin so we can all do our part to help the environment.
Currently, the city has four bins. We have the blue, which is for the recyclables. We have the green for the yard trimmings. And we have the brown. And then we have the trash, which is the black. Anything that doesn't go to the blue, the green, and the brown, it goes to the black or the trash. What goes into the blue are the mixed papers, the cardboard, the cartons, the scrap metals, and the plastic. Make sure that all those materials must be clean, dry, so that it will not bring any contamination to the good materials that are already in the blue. The city has seven safe centers. And the safe is an acronym for solvent, automotive, flammable, and electronic. So we have seven locations strategically located within the city of L.A. And those materials can be dropped off to those locations. Right now, the only item that goes into the green bin is the yard waste. And when we have this Curb Your Food Waste Pilot Program, where the resident has the opportunity to recycle food waste, then they have the opportunity to put it into the green. And at the same time, when we have this Phase Two of the Organics L.A. program, we added like 22,000 households. The food that we put into the trash or the black bin, they go to the landfill. And once it goes to the landfill, it decompose and produces greenhouse gas or the methane gas. And the methane gas is a significant contributor to the global warming.
The Elysian Valley Arts Collective teamed up with the city to host the Frog Town Art Walk to showcase its three pillars: art, nature, and play. Artists from all backgrounds presented their work in person and in an environment that supports diverse voices and representation. Let's take a look.
We're here at the Frog Town Art Walk, put on by the Elysian Valley Arts Collective and others, to share what the L.A. River Public Art Project has done and will be doing in the future. We're an organization that's dedicated to public art on the L.A. River as part of nature, art, and play.
Frog Town has been very gracious to host this art walk. In past years, it's been virtual because of the pandemic shutdown. But this year is our first year back. And we've had lots of traffic and lots of people checking out our artwork.
I think it's a wonderful way, as an artist, to be able to showcase their work. And I think it's a great way to bring people together in the community. And they can get out and have a fun day outdoors, having a great time.
We are a vehicle. We're a tool that artists can use to present their work. We're not being prescriptive to say it should be X and not Y. We are here to create an opportunity for a presentation of voices that might not be heard otherwise.
It's been a great opportunity to be able to show our work in person. I know I myself, I haven't been able to have the public see my work in person. And this year, we've been able to host a lot of artists as part of this art walk. And I'm sure everybody feels the same way to be able to get out in the public again.
We have ideas about what a major public art project could be. We also have a toolie boat created by indigenous advisors and indigenous people as part of the cultural richness of the river. An interpretation of the boats that we would have seen on the coast of Santa Monica, the Santa Monica Bay. So it's not just about art you might find in a museum or a gallery. I mean, we want art to be experiential. We want art to speak to the entire history of the river, from the very beginning until the future.
Our position and our mission and our advocacy is to see art along all 51 miles of the river. And to demonstrate what that would be like, we have commissioned artists over the last 10 years to do temporary and short-term installations and provide a vision for the whole community, for the whole region, for all of Los Angeles to look at and consider its impact on the river.
Want to hear and celebrate stories in both English and Spanish? That's what the Fourth Annual Los Angeles Libros Festival, a bilingual literary event for the whole family, was all about. Adults and children enjoyed lively and fun performances from artists that represent many voices in our city.
It's the Fourth Annual Los Angeles Libros Festival. And it's a bilingual literary festival for the whole family. And the reason it's so important is we want to celebrate bilingualism. We have authors and illustrators coming in. We have performers, music. We also have a partnership with La Libreria, the only bookstore in Los Angeles who specializes in children's and teen literature in Spanish. And so they are also able to come in and help us encourage people to read in whatever language they read.
The Los Angeles Libros Festival invited Skopel and Soffol Press, our independent publishing company from Whittier, California, to participate. And we were local authors and illustrators. And this afternoon, we shared our book, "Mommy Tell Me Why I Am Radiant." "Mommy, dime porque soy radiante." And we read this to community at a bilingual storytime.
And we also shared our trilingual counting board book. And it's in English, Spanish, and Nahuatl. It's Hummerbird Colibril with Swiss music.
I think it's important for everyone to bring their kids because it's a library. Everyone should know how to read. Everyone should have that opportunity.
It's really important to be bilingual because that's where Los Angeles is today. She, Paloma, is actually in a bilingual kindergarten. So we want the opportunity to expose her in this casual supportive space where it's very easy to access art, culture, the love. And so we love the opportunity to talk to the authors, the books that we read. So it's a blessing to have all this here, you know, for free.
Even though it's wonderful for parents to bring their children to the library as often as possible, if you're not able to, you can go to lapl.org. We have so many services online. But if you can't make it to the library in person, we welcome you online as well.
We just appreciate our librarians and everyone who does all the work to put this together. We really appreciate you. And we'll continue to follow everything that's happening with this event every year.
The event is free and everyone is welcome. Everyone is invited. So you can come and celebrate books and reading in any language you speak.
In our feature story this week, our own Anita Bennett sits down with the newly appointed councilwoman for Council District 10, Heather Hutt. As the first Black woman representing the district, she discusses her hopes and goals for CD10. Let's hear this story.
Recently, the city council confirmed Heather Hutt to represent Council District 10. Now that she is on the council, Hutt is laying out her plans for the district, and she joins us now. So what plans do you have for CD10?
My plan is to use all the city resources possible to bring CD10 back to where it was. We're doubling down on the work that we're doing with our homeless population. Make sure our homeless neighbors are housed. When we got our homeless count, 1,300 people, and this was in February, were identified as unhoused in CD10. Between February and now, we have identified that just about 30% of those folks have been housed. And we'll continue to fight to make sure that they are housing secure.
You are the first woman to represent CD10 and the first Black woman. What does that mean to you?
First of all, it is incredible that there hasn't been a woman here before. And for it to be me is a great responsibility. I have to show little girls of any color that they can do this. Because if you can see it, what? You could be it, right?
What has been the reaction to your appointment in the district?
People are really happy to have a voting member. They felt disenfranchised. They felt like it was taxation without representation. We have a vocal district. And they were the ones that reached out to council president and said, hey, we need a voting member. And that is really the trigger.
And Council President Nuri Martinez has also been very supportive.
Completely supportive. She certainly does understand the city and the complexities of all of it. I appreciate her leadership. And I'm really proud to be able to work with the council president.
Well, there is a lot of hope about the future in CD10. And we thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having me. I do want to say, if folks want to get in touch with our office, That's how you get in touch with us. That's how you can see what our updates are and our upcoming events.
Enjoy a performance from Dr. Pianist. Celebrate the culture of Jalisco without leaving L.A. Or check out the L.A. Public Library's Creators and Residents Showcase. All this up next on Things to Do.
Have you ever wondered about the science behind the power of music to heal and unite us? That's what Dr. Pianist Makiko Harada has made her life's mission. Through collaborations with neuroscientists, she quantifies the benefits of music, which you can experience for free at the Platt Branch Library. An internationally renowned classical pianist, Makiko Harada will be performing a live concert, where the theme of the program is Stories Without Words. Attendees will be delighted with works by Chopin, Ravel, and Schumann, amongst many others. Makiko will be performing on a new Kawhi K300 piano funded by the Friends of the Platt Library. Angelinos are welcome to attend this free live concert that will take place at the Platt Branch Library on Saturday, October 15, at 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. Celebrate your Mexican roots in pure Jalisco style at the free-day event Fiesta de Octubre at Pershing Square. The event is aimed at promoting Jalisco on an international level. During its duration, there will be live performances from artists like La Arroyadora, amongst many others. Everyone can attend this free event to enjoy the culture, cuisine, music, drinks, and bonds between Jalisco and California. Fiesta de Octubre will take place at Pershing Square from Friday, October 14 through Sunday, October 16. For more details and to register for free, search for Fiesta de Octubre on Eventbrite.com. The Los Angeles Public Library invites you to experience the artistry of their inaugural Creators and Residents program. This free showcase will feature new original work from photographer Quasi Boyd Bolden and visual artist River Garza. Rooted in the Black and Indigenous Tongva communities, respectively, the conversation between these two artists will cover their approach at art-making and how their views on the city inspired them. The event is open to everyone and will also include activities for all ages. It takes place at the Mark Taper Auditorium at the Central Library on Sunday, October 16, at 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. And from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. And we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Members, can we please sit down so we can start our meeting? Members, can we please sit down so we can begin our meeting? Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, October 7th. I'm Nury Martinez, President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, present.
De Leon. Harris Dawson. Ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of October 4th, 2022.
Mr. De Leon moves and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Lee moves and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds.
Items 1 through 29 are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item 26 has been submitted and is online under Council File 22-1139. Items 30 through 34 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, you wish to call any of these items special? Mr. O'Farrell?
Item 27 special for remarks, please.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
I'm sorry, not Mr. Price, Mr. Krikorian. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 26 special for an amendment which will be circulated shortly.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you have it ready to be read into the record?
One and I, may I read it in?
Mr. City Attorney has a... Okay, go ahead.
So, the recommendation or, excuse me, the amendment is to replace recommendation 6 in the Budget and Finance Committee report with the following. Instruct the Office of the City Administrative Officer to report through the first fiscal status report with recommendations to address any spending above the budgeted amount, the results from the increases to the contract limits and usage authorized therein, presented by Mr. Krikorian and seconded by Mr. Bloomingfield. And it's not a substantial amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Members, are there any other specials? Seeing no other members on the queue, Madam Clerk, which are the available items for us to vote on?
Madam President, there are cards on items 30 through 34, and council may vote on items 1 through 25, 28, 29, and 26 as amended.
Items 1 through 25, 28, 29, and did you say 26?
As amended for 26.
1 through 26. Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on those items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, we're gonna move into presentations at this time. Mr. O'Farrell, I believe you have a special introduction?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, five years ago, we made history when we eliminated Columbus Day from the city's administrative code and replaced it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Well, this Monday is our fifth commemoration of Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Los Angeles. And key to that first celebration that we were able to hold back in 2018 were my good friends joining me today, Pat Redbone Vegas, PJ Vegas, and Taboo from the Black Eyed Peas. They led the entertainment that evening, and it really helped elevate the plight, the celebration, the history, and the meaning of what it is when we celebrated the first Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Los Angeles. This action turbocharged the movement across the United States, and this council had a place in making that history. If you remember, when the vote was taken, this building erupted into joy, celebration, and healing. Well, the movement continues. Our work and advocacy to uplift Indigenous voices continues, and it builds on our historic efforts over the past five years. So, I would like to thank, first, the Los Angeles City County Native American Indian Commission, and all of the tribal and indigenous communities here in Los Angeles, and the nations who will be joining us this Monday from 4 to 8 at Grand Park, right across the And amongst this very special guest will be the Gabrielano Tongva Band of Mission Indians, and the Fernandano Taviam Band of Mission Indians. We are on sacred ground. Yang Na, the Tongva village, was right here where City Hall is now built. We must recognize our past and the sacrifices made by First Peoples against their own will, so that we all may live in peace, and build our families, and build our lives on this sacred land. And that's what Indigenous People is all about, honoring the people who sacrificed everything, including their lives, so that we may have the civilization of modern-day Los Angeles. So, with that, as a member of the Wyandotte Nation, myself, I'd like to introduce Taboo to say a few quick words.
Thank you. First of all, as an Angelino, I'm very proud. I want to also acknowledge todos los mexicanos que están aquí este día. Mabuhai to all my Filipinos representing. And salute to my brother Joe Coy. I'm so proud of you, brother. I love you, I appreciate you, and thank you for being here. I also want to acknowledge everybody for this amazing opportunity to celebrate First Nations Indigenous People on Monday. And forever, we will continue championing the idea of bringing representation to mainstream media and erase all the misconceptions and stereotypes of what an Indigenous people or Indigenous person is, and we are the first to do that, and we appreciate the love and support from everyone here.
Now, I'd like to introduce my friend PJ Vegas.
Hello, everyone. My name is PJ Vegas, Leo Sumchamanyawu in Eopo, PJ Vegas. As a fellow Angelino, this is a very proud moment for Indigenous people. We get to celebrate our culture, our excellence, and we're just happy to be able to share the stage right now with our Filipino community. Thank you, guys, for being here today, and we hope that you guys join us on October 10th in Grand Park for Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's gonna be a great time.
And last but not least, Pat Redbone, come and get your love, Vegas.
I'd like to thank you all for being here today and to honor us like this, and Mr. O'Farrell. It's gonna be a wonderful year this coming year, and I'm glad you're here. So, come and get your love, people. Don't forget, I want you to come and get your love. There'll be plenty of it. God bless you.
So, colleagues, everyone listening, join us. It's gonna be a celebration. There'll be vendor booths, there'll be activities for our youth. It's gonna be a wonderful celebration, one that we can all get behind. God bless Indigenous America. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Price, if I can ask you to, I think you have an introduction? Did you like to make, actually, two introductions?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, five years ago, we made history when we eliminated Columbus Day from the city's administrative code and replaced it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Well, this Monday is our fifth commemoration of Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Los Angeles. And key to that first celebration that we were able to hold back in 2018 were my good friends joining me today, Pat Redbone Vegas, PJ Vegas, and Taboo from the Black Eyed Peas. They led the entertainment that evening, and it really helped elevate the plight, the celebration, the history, and the meaning of what it is when we celebrated the first Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Los Angeles. This action turbocharged the movement across the United States, and this council had a place in making that history. If you remember, when the vote was taken, this building erupted into joy, celebration, and healing. Well, the movement continues. Our work and advocacy to uplift Indigenous voices continues, and it builds on our historic efforts over the past five years. So, I would like to thank, first, the Los Angeles City County Native American Indian Commission, and all of the tribal and indigenous communities here in Los Angeles, and the nations who will be joining us this Monday from 4 to 8 at Grand Park, right across the And amongst this very special guest will be the Gabrielano Tongva Band of Mission Indians, and the Fernandano Taviam Band of Mission Indians. We are on sacred ground. Yang Na, the Tongva village, was right here where City Hall is now built. We must recognize our past and the sacrifices made by First Peoples against their own will, so that we all may live in peace, and build our families, and build our lives on this sacred land. And that's what Indigenous People is all about, honoring the people who sacrificed everything, including their lives, so that we may have the civilization of modern-day Los Angeles. So, with that, as a member of the Wyandotte Nation, myself, I'd like to introduce Taboo to say a few quick words. Thank you.
First of all, as an Angelino, I'm very proud. I want to also acknowledge todos los mexicanos que están aquí este día. Mabuhai to all my Filipinos representing. And salute to my brother Joe Coy. I'm so proud of you, brother. I love you, I appreciate you, and thank you for being here. I also want to acknowledge everybody for this amazing opportunity to celebrate First Nations Indigenous People on Monday. And forever, we will continue championing the idea of bringing representation to mainstream media and erase all the misconceptions and stereotypes of what an Indigenous people or Indigenous person is, and we are the first to do that, and we appreciate the love and support from everyone here. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to introduce my friend PJ Vegas.
Hello, everyone. My name is PJ Vegas, Leo Sumchamanyawu in Eopo, PJ Vegas. As a fellow Angelino, this is a very proud moment for Indigenous people. We get to celebrate our culture, our excellence, and we're just happy to be able to share the stage right now with our Filipino community. Thank you, guys, for being here today, and we hope that you guys join us on October 10th in Grand Park for Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's gonna be a great time.
And last but not least, Pat Redbone, come and get your love, Vegas.
I'd like to thank you all for being here today and to honor us like this, and Mr. O'Farrell. It's gonna be a wonderful year this coming year, and I'm glad you're here. So, come and get your love, people. Don't forget, I want you to come and get your love. There'll be plenty of it. God bless you.
So, colleagues, everyone listening, join us. It's gonna be a celebration. There'll be vendor booths, there'll be activities for our youth. It's gonna be a wonderful celebration, one that we can all get behind. God bless Indigenous America. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Price, if I can ask you to, I think you have an introduction? Did you like to make, actually, two introductions?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we have a very special guest from Ethiopia today, but before we make that introduction, I also have the pleasure of welcoming 40 students from the University of Southern California's International Public Policy and Management Program. Let's give a hand to our young leaders. In fact, has been in Washington, D.C. now in a new diplomatic post for four months. We all know that Ethiopia is a founding member of the United Nations, along with the United States, going back to 1945. But our ties date further back than that. The United States and Ethiopia have been longtime allies. The United States-Ethiopia diplomatic relations were established back in December of '27, 1903, when King of Ethiopia, Menelik II, and the U.S. Representative Member of Congress, Robert P. Skinner, signed a Treaty of Commerce in which the two nations agreed to receive representatives in order to perpetuate and strengthen the friendly relations that exist between Ethiopia and the United States of America. We have been very longtime strong allies through very difficult and challenging times. And despite international instability, Ethiopia remains not only the second-most populated nation on the entire African continent, but more impressively, they have been the nation -- I want to underscore the following -- they have been the nation with the lowest income inequality in all of Africa. Now, we had, Mr. Ambassador, last week, Wednesday, the honor and pleasure to light up our very own City Hall, as well as our newest iconic symbol of L.A., Sixth Street Bridge, in the colors of your beautiful flag, both green, yellow, and red. And I can say this. And this is yet another reason why we must maintain our support for the people of Ethiopia, who are a beacon to the world for equality. I've had also the pleasure to have an Ethiopian-American work on my staff, and that's Helen Amelga, who worked with me in the California State Senate, as well as the Los Angeles City Council. And by the way, after Washington, D.C., Los Angeles is the home to the second-largest Ethiopian diaspora in the United States of America. And Ethiopia, by the way, folks, is the only nation in Africa to not have been colonized, the only nation. And that speaks to the strength of who they are as a people. It speaks to their independence, you know, as a people, and that's why I'm honored to be here with my colleague Current Price and with our ambassador. Madam President, as well as colleagues, thank you very much. Thank you.
Honorable council members, thank you very much for welcoming me and my delegation to the beautiful city of Angeles. I also thank you very much to Councilmember Price and Councilmember Kevin DeLeon for this special introduction, as well as leading the city of Los Angeles, who is tricolor of Ethiopia. As it is explained, Ethiopia is a founding member of the United Nations, along with the United States of America in 1945. Our diplomatic relationship spans about 120 years, which started with the same king of Ethiopia, Menelik II, and Robert Skinner. They have signed a Treaty of Commerce. The two states agreed at that time to receive representatives in order to perpetuate and strengthen the friendly relationship which exists between Ethiopia and the U.S., the United States of America. Of course, our people-to-people relationship spans over that period of time, in the 1800s centuries. There were strong people-to-people relations even before the formal diplomatic relationship. Los Angeles is home to the second-largest Ethiopian population in the United States of America, United States of America in general, also the first place where most of Ethiopians live outside Ethiopia. So, it is our second home. I'm proud to have seen Little Ethiopia, the first neighborhood to be named after African countries in the United States of America as well. The U.S. relationship is very deep. We went together into Korean War. We fought together the terrorism, particularly in the Horn of Africa. We collaborated and established partnerships in world peacekeeping. Ethiopian troops are in many places even today to protect the peace and the freedom of people. On business front, we have also successful relationships. Ethiopian Airlines, which is a major customer and the biggest airline of Africa, is buying most of its planes from Boeing. Ethiopia is opening up its business and market. Currently, privatization of telecom, energy sector, and so on are ongoing. The banking sector is also open, so there is huge and significant business opportunity in the second-largest populous country of Africa, which is Ethiopia, having 120 million people. I hope we can work with diaspora community here to establish a sister-city relationship between Los Angeles and Addis Ababa. I'm a parliament member of Addis Ababa City. I hope I can facilitate and welcome you all in Addis Ababa one day very soon. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Members?
Members, we have a member on the queue, Mr. Sadio. Thank you for being here, Ambassador. It's a real pleasure to welcome you to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. And members, we have a very special presentation today led by Mr. O'Farrell, celebrating the 2022 Filipino-American History Month. Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready? Please go ahead, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Welcome, everyone. Mabuhai. Hello, colleagues. October is Filipino-American History Month, an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the immense contributions of Los Angeles's Filipino-American community from our city's founding to the present day. As the representative of historic Filipino town, a neighborhood that has been home to Filipinos since the 1940s and still serves as a gateway for many Filipino immigrants, I have the good fortune of working with Los Angeles's Filipino-American community on a daily basis to elevate and share the history of this incredible community well beyond Los Angeles. The impact of Filipino-Americans has been especially felt during the last two and a half years, when many of our Filipino brothers and sisters served on the front lines, sacrificed, lost their lives on the front lines in our hospitals, fighting and protecting us from COVID-19. Big round of applause for our healthcare workers who saved us from this pandemic. As public officials, it's our responsibility to uplift these contributions, which we did in May when we unveiled the Hi-Fi Eastern Gateway. Have you all seen it? It's incredible. The largest Filipino-American gateway in the country. A book could be written about the years-long process that occurred to make this project a reality. Years of community outreach, collectively overcoming setbacks and obstacles, and close coordination with the Board of Public Works. The Eastern Gateway pays tribute to both the legacy and the bright future of the Filipino-American community in the city of Los Angeles. To start with our remarks celebrating this incredible history, I'd like to invite our city attorney, Mike Fuhr.
Thank you very much, Councilman O'Farrell. And I think all of us need to recognize that that gateway that now adorns historic Filipino town would not be there except for the leadership of Councilman O'Farrell, who deserves applause for doing that. Mabuhai, it is such a privilege to be able to be here to celebrate this very significant day with all of Angelinos, not just people here in this council chamber, but throughout the city of Los Angeles, who are here to celebrate the enormous contributions of the Filipino-American community and Filipino-Americans here in Los Angeles. As we know, L.A. County is home to roughly a half million Filipino-American neighbors. The second-largest Asian-American Pacific Islander community in the state of California is Filipino-Americans, and we here today recognize that heritage. We also are here to celebrate the 40th anniversary of LA FACE, the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. Let's give all of you a hand. So many of our colleagues here in city government of Filipino-American heritage work in my office. I'm especially proud of that contribution that they make to justice and fairness in Los Angeles every single day. Mitch mentioned contributions, and I want to allude to two. The first is something that he referenced, and that is the sacrifice of Filipino-American healthcare workers. Those are institutions, but also those who work in our homes. All of us who have worked with senior citizens in particular, or who have aging parents or grandparents, have some contact with home healthcare workers who are more likely than not of Filipino-American heritage, and they serve with great courage and compassion and humanity. One of the most important cases that we brought in my office was to stand up for home healthcare workers of Filipino-American descent who were having their wages stolen, we alleged, from the company that worked with them. And we worked closely with advocates from the community to assure that they had justice and restitution, because that's everything that they deserved. The other bit of recognition I want to provide is to Joe Coy, who is standing behind me, who's gonna be getting a lot of applause not long from now. He in the inconspicuous red cap, so we're all here to note that. But I want to say, you know, he has, obviously, he's a celebrity of great renown. There was a review of his Netflix special, and one of the reviewers wrote, "Joe pushes the concept that we, as people, are all the same, even though we may look different." And Joe is a philanthropist who's contributed significantly to the community here, and his groundbreaking movie, Easter Sunday, was the first major studio production to highlight the lives of Filipino-Americans here in the United States. And that's so important, because we know the representation really matters. We're also delighted, of course, to celebrate with Council General Edgar Badajoz, who is with us. And I want to conclude by saying this. You know, this is a celebration, and we're all really happy to be here. But it's also a moment for us to underscore that we still live in our society and here in the city of Los Angeles with anti-Asian-American hate. We live with it every day. There have been grandparents and parents throughout the pandemic who were afraid to go to the store because they were concerned that they would be targeted only because of their API heritage. We here in the city recognize that there is no room for any such act, and in my office, we prosecute hate crimes. And I want to use this moment to underscore to those who may have been victimized but are uncertain that they will be embraced and vindicated, to please come forward so we can stand up for you. It's a great day here in Los Angeles, because it's Filipino-American History Month. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Mike. That historic Filipino-town gateway connects the 13th District on one side to the first council district on the other. Representing Council District 1 is our friend and colleague Gil Sadio.
Mitch O'Farrell, you've done an extraordinary job making sure everybody in your district is seen and included. Michael Fuhr, you have been one of the most articulate voices for social justice during your tenure, and your voice will be missed. It is sober, articulate, it is on point, and it is reality-based.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it's true. My experience with the Filipino-American community began with my dad's venture from Barstow, California, to Los Angeles, as he landed on Temple Bowdrie. And there, he went to the junior high school, and he went to Belmont High School. My dad joined the army and became very familiar with the plight and the struggle of the Filipino veterans. Interesting, I currently live one block away from both the high school and the corner where my dad came to Los Angeles. So, it's natural for us, when we campaigned, that my father would join me as we went and talked to the Filipino veterans. And we heard the story about their efforts in World War II and the denial of their rights and benefits that were promised to them. They were part of a movement to stop fascism in the world. They were part of a united front. They put down their flags and joined our soldiers and fought the fascists and saved our world for democracy. And so, they deserved to have been seen and heard, and they deserved their benefits. Of course, when you leave the army at 20 and 30, that's not a big deal. 40, you begin to think about it at 50, but we could see, as we campaigned up the street, the urgency for that to get done. I met Jerry Valero. He was an organizer of nurses when I led SCIU 660. And when I went to him to help me in my election, he says, "You have to hire Mao." I didn't know Mao. Didn't know who he was talking about. But we were able to find Mao Yulman up around Verge and Third, looking for him, and Mao has been with me from the very first day. Thanks to Mao's leadership and insight, thanks to Tony Rokasa, who followed him closely, who I knew from the county, we wrote a bill so that Filipino veterans could receive their benefits and could go home to the Philippines and have the dignity and respect that had been promised to them by our country. And so, Mitch, thank you. Kevin, Michael, this is a very important day. The celebration that we see of the bridge of the gateway is so important, because what it does, Joe Coy, is it says that the city of Los Angeles sees us and embraces us. It embraces Mao Yulman and Tony Rokasa and Gerald Gubaton, one of the best planners the city has ever had. It embraces Marissa Abrahano, who worked for us, is now a Ph.D. teaching at UC San Diego, and Lindsay Gavarcio, and Jennifer LaSang. Jennifer is wonderful, because she had to drive me the first time she came to my staff. She just learned how to drive. She's done much better. She's now attorney, and she's always criticizing us on behalf of tenants. But, Joe, what it says is that this month, this acknowledgement from the city says, "We are being seen." And a city that has such an important community at a moment where hate crimes proliferate, this is the time that we need to be seen, that we need to be heard, we need to be celebrated. If we say diversity is our strength, and I believe that, then this is what we should be doing today. And so, I want to thank you for, all my colleagues, for your leadership in making this presentation, saying to the world that we do see the Filipino community, and that we see all communities, and that we do embrace, by our actions, not just our words, but by our deeds, that diversity is the strength of the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here with you.
Beautifully said, Gil. Thank you so much. Another advocate-champion of the Filipino community is Kevin DeLeon.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you so very much, Councilmember Mitchell O'Farrell, for bringing us together. And to Mike Fuhr, our city attorney, I want to thank you very much for your dedication to public service. And to our councilmember Gil Sadio, such powerful, powerful words. And I want to thank you very much for a historic legacy that you have left us, not just in Sacramento, but right here in Los Angeles City Hall. I just want to very quickly just recognize and pay tribute to the Filipino-Americans across the great city of Los Angeles for the ways that they have enriched our cultural fabric, the beautiful mosaic of who we are as a diverse city, the most diverse city on planet Earth, which is the city of Los Angeles. And to have the largest diaspora outside of Manila, you know, to come here to the United States, but specifically to California and to Southern California and to Los Angeles is incredible, to have our own historic Filipino town, which I was honored to represent, both in the Assembly as well as the Senate when I was leader, the president of the California State Senate. But I also have my own Filipino town too. For those who live in Eagle Rock, for the Eagle Rockers in the House, you know, that's our second Filipino town here in the city of LA. You know, though, maybe when you get into the middle class, when you start moving up, the folks move over to the Eagle Rock area. But, you know, I love historic Filipino town. So many of our senior citizens, I don't speak, I can say mabuhay, you know, I don't speak tagalog, you know? But I only speak, for those who are from Ilocos Norte, Ilocos Sur, Ilocano, you know? You know, for those who want to speak Ilocano, we can speak right there. But I want to say, last night, we had an incredible celebration that Susana Reyes brought us together. And we recognize Joe, Joe Coy, you know, not just an incredible Filipino comedian, Filipino-American comedian, an incredible comedian, period, you know, who also reminded me, you know, as an American, and who also reminded me, he sold out the Forum. Four consecutive shows, four consecutive shows. And as he's wearing his red, you know, beanie right now, you know, we got hipsters, we got chipsters, we got flipsters also here too, you know? So I'm trying to be a comedian too. You know, we recognize Linda Nietas Little, who is a bigger-than-life cultural preservationist for the Filipino community down in San Pedro. And of course, you know, the LA Filipino Association of City Employees, LA FACE, who celebrate their 40th anniversary, 40th anniversary. Last, I'll just say this, is I know that Mitch mentioned this, and I'm really glad that you did, and so did Mike. The coronavirus devastated us, and in some ways, some communities more so than others, catastrophically. For the RNs, for the LVNs, and for the CNAs. And I got a little, you know, experience with this because a lot of folks know that my mother spent the vast majority of her life working her fingers to the bone as a housekeeper, cleaning other people's homes. But in the last two years of her life, she worked in a convalescent home, taking care of the very wealthy, when the very wealthy's families didn't want to take care of them. So it was Latina women, it was Latino men, it was Filipina women, Filipino men who were taking care of the very wealthy. In this case, it wasn't the West Side of Beverly Hills or the Palisades or Brentwood, it's down in San Diego, in La Jolla. And my mom, as I just mentioned a few weeks ago, when we celebrated with Mr. Corretts, we recognized ovarian cancer, she died from ovarian cancer. But it was the Filipino women who sustained my family, my mother's family, Carmen Nunez, because it was the Filipino women who brought plates of lumpia and pancit and chicken adobo, because my mom didn't have the strength to pick up the pans and to cook for herself and for her family. So it was that fabric that binds us together, whether you're Latino, whether you're white, whether you're Armenian, Korean, you know, African-American, Ethiopian, Filipino, it is that binds Native Americans, you know? You know, it brings us together, and that is the strength of who we are. So I'm just honored to be here with all our Filipino-American friends here, our neighbors, our loved ones, our coworkers. Thank you, Mitch, for bringing us together, and I am honored here today as we celebrate Filipino-American History Month. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Also joining us in this acknowledgement are two very important local leaders. Kevin just mentioned her commissioner, Susana Reyes, LA Board of Public Works, general manager Miguel Sangalang, who's also here, Bureau of Street Lighting, and Janelle Para, president of our Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, LA FACE. Also with us are Filipino representatives from the Los Angeles Police Department and Filipino queens and kings. This year marks an important milestone for our Filipino City Employees Association as they mark their 40th anniversary. The first honoree, Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, LA FACE. A little bit about LA FACE. A little over 40 years ago, on Thursday, March 25, 1982, 84 Filipino-American employees from various departments of the city of LA, spearheaded by Larry Rivera of the Community Development Department and Kress Abad of the Personnel Department, convened where we are standing right now in council chambers and unanimously approved the creation of an association that advocated for Filipino-American city employees fondly known as LA FACE. It is the mission and policy of LA FACE to foster the advancement of Filipino-Americans and all employees in city service, nurture collaborations with communities of color, and extend assistance to organizations in promoting the economic, social, cultural, and educational advancement of Filipino-Americans and all city employees. LA FACE continues to enrich the cultural and social fabric of Los Angeles by organizing cultural events such as Philippine Independence Day festivities every June, Filipino-American History Month every October, hosting annual gatherings, showcasing Filipino-American food and hospitality, and engaging the Filipino community through various efforts. We are so glad to be joined by a group of past LA FACE presidents. And can we all acknowledge that how LA FACE just uplifts all city workers? Thank you so much, LA FACE, for your contributions to the entire LA city workforce. So I'd like to acknowledge all past presidents to stand and be acknowledged of LA FACE. Please rise. Big round of applause. You've made it possible to continue this. And I'd like to invite LA FACE President Janelle Para to accept this resolution to commemorate the 40th anniversary of LA FACE and to say a few words. Janelle.
Thank you. So let's give you this first, for all, let's all gather and give you, present this to you first. Yeah, there you go. That beautiful red dress. We'll take this. There you go. Take it away. You bet.
Magandang umagapó. Good morning, honorable councilmembers, Board of Public Works Commissioners, Susana Reyes, Civil and Human Rights Commissioner, Abigail Zalinski, Joe Coy and his family, fellow Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employee Officers, Members, and distinguished guests. My name is Janelle Para. I'm the current president of LA FACE. I would like to thank the council for commemorating the 2022 Filipino-American History Month in October. This year marks our 40th anniversary. In March of 1982, 84 people gathered in council chambers to establish the first organization representing the Filipino-Americans, city employees. Today, the organization continues its mission to foster the advancement of Filipino-Americans and all city employees in their city service and fields. We embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we relish our reputation for providing the best training possible to help city employees promote and ascend through city ranks. I would like to acknowledge several of LA FACE's founders. Lina Partosa is here with us today. Larry Rivera and Kress Abad, along with past presidents, Quora Soriano, Joan Tagal. And of course, my current officers, board officers are right here with me today. On behalf of LA FACE and the 6,000 Filipinos serving the city, I am thankful to our mayor, the city council, specially council District 13, Mitchell O'Farrell. Special council aide, William Ayala, I know you're here somewhere.
Where's William? There he is.
Thank you, William. Council District Member Gil Sadio, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Councilmember Kevin DeLeon, thank you, sir. For recognizing the 2022 Phil American History Month and also for celebrating our 40th anniversary. Mabuhay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Janelle, thanks for recognizing William. William Ayala is like a superhero of presentations, always has been, always will be. William, thank you so much. As one of today's premier stand-up comedians, Joe Coy has come a long way from his modest beginnings, performing in a Las Vegas coffee house. Coy's uniquely relatable comedy pulls inspiration from his colorful family that has reached all kinds of people and has translated into sold-out arenas around the world, including the Forum. Joe Coy, you are a boss. That's who you are. Coy started 2022 with a bang, selling out the Climate Pledge Arena, over 14,000 tickets in his hometown of Seattle. We won't hold that against you because you're in LA. Today, he continues breaking sales records at some of the most prestigious venues around the world, including the Forum, four sold-out concerts, Gil just reminded me, Mall of Asia Arena in Manila, Coca-Cola Arena in Dubai, ICC Theater in Sydney, and Radio City Music Hall in New York, to name a few. In 2017, Coy broke a record for the most tickets sold by a single artist at 23,000 tickets and 11 sold-out shows at the Neil Blyzdell Concert Hall in Honolulu. In response, the mayor's office in Honolulu proclaimed November 24 as Joe Coy Day.
Joe Coy Day.
Not to be outdone, the jig is up. Today in Los Angeles is Joe Coy Day, October 7.
Oh, man. Man, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't know I was gonna get emotional, even though I do get emotional all the time. But, man, where do I start? One, thank you, Janelle Para. Like, you're beautiful, your work that you do for LA FACE, it's, you remind me of my childhood, and the reason why is my mom moved to this country in, you know, late 60s, right? So when she came here, already she's dealing with a lot of racism and, and her just, even though she's been, God, I'm getting emotional, I'm sorry. Hold on, I'll get it, I'll get it. You know, you come to this country, and I talk, you know, I do jokes because I want to, I want to tell the story without, without having to do this whole thing where I'm like, you know, Filipinos do this. And I wanted, I wanted to do a thing where I could tell the story about my mom and just let you hear what my mom does as a mom. And then you will relate to it and realize that a mom is just a mom, no matter what her ethnicity is, what her religion is, what her accent is. And that's, that's the one that annoys me the most, is I do the best impersonation of my mother. And, and that impersonation is my mom. So when I do my mom's voice, it's my way of showing everybody that I'm Filipino and paying respect to my mother. Because as a kid, you know, when my mom and dad divorced, I saw my mom just trying to find other Filipinos in her community. So if you could just imagine, like, when I tell the joke about Filipino nurses, I have so many Filipino nurses in my family. I have an aunt that has about seven nursing homes in Bakersfield. Seven nursing homes and just a ton of Filipino nurses that work there. And, and they work their butts off, and they take care of people 14 hours a day, and they've been doing it for over 30 years. And then they go home every day after a hard day's work, and they turn on the TV, and they watch a TV show about hospitals, any hospital, and they don't see one nurse being played by a Filipino. And that's, and like, we giggle at that, and I don't understand why we giggle at that, because it's normalized, and it shouldn't be normalized. Imagine how those people feel. Imagine how my aunts feel and my uncles feel. It almost feels like they're invisible. They don't have an identity, or whatever they did for whoever they took care of doesn't matter, because you're just a visitor. You just live here. You're not American, and we'll never show you on TV. And that's why I do the jokes that I do. I want to give that voice. I want people to know about Janelle, people that bring a community together. This reminds me of my mom. I did another joke where my mom was just looking around, just looking for Filipinos, because there was no Instagram, there was no Facebook, there was no Twitter. When my mom found Filipinos, she had to really look for Filipinos. She would just look for anything brown. She'll walk up to a Mexican, Filipino. I've seen my mom do that. My mom would be at church and just looking for other people while we're at church, and just looking for other people that looked like her and walk up. Just like, I know it's a joke, but like, to see someone doing that, it's, it's hard. So it's like, I tip my hat off to women like this because you don't really know what they're going through when they're walking these, I don't want to say streets, but you know what I mean, when they walk amongst us, they're just, they're just trying to find their community. And when they turn on the TV to find it, they don't see it. So with my four specials that are on Netflix, and there's two more that got kind of like buried, but we won't talk about that network. But there's, there's six hours out there where they'll have an identity. Yeah, so that's why I do it. Hold on. Yeah, I'll continue to do it. So, you know, when you hear, when you hear someone say something like, I'd never heard, oh, man, I don't want to get into all this, man, I just, you know, when, it's important. Representation is important. You know, I just walked upstairs and, you know, I was flanked by, you know, all these beautiful men in blue right here and women in blue, serving and protecting this country and this, this city. And, and then six of them were Filipino. That's all I'm saying, six, just six, couple of sergeants. Where is she? This, this woman arrested my son. Because I made her, because I made her.
She's also a city councilwoman.
And she's also a, exactly. But when we turn on the TV and we watch a movie about police officers, we don't see them. That's all I'm saying, man. Imagine how she feels. Imagine how they feel. They protect and serve us. When something happens, you call them for help. But then when they go to the TV, they don't exist. They're invisible. That's all I'm saying. So when I hear stuff like, "You're too specific from Hollywood," well, to me, that's, that's the ignorance we need to get rid of. So stop saying stuff like "specific," because the minute we lose that specificity, I can never say this word, Kevin. I like going, I like going to Kevin because for some reason Kevin has said every word correctly except for tagalog. He said tagalog, and I was like, man, you better slow down. You heard that too, right, Tab? Even Tab, you know, I want everyone to know, Tabu's married to a Filipino woman, and I'm also, I'm also his son's godson, a god- I'm also his son's godson, uh, godfather, so I just want everyone to know that. This is actually Tabu's hat. But even Tabu was like, ooh, Kevin messed that one up. But, but it's, when I hear that, when they say you're too specific, no, we're not specific enough. You know what I mean? Council member Lee. We're not specific enough, man. We need to hear everyone's story. You know what I mean? I wanna see everyone represented. And not just in the Filipino community, you know? Everyone, everyone's voice deserves to be heard. So it means a lot to me. This isn't my day, I'm sharing it with you. So, and I'm sharing it with every, man, I'd not want, I was even telling my son, I was telling myself, like, don't cry today, out of all the days, not your day. But it, it just, I don't wanna, I don't want that to ever be lost, that identity to be lost, you know? It, it has to keep going on. Yes, we need to hear the accents. We need to hear about your food, and we need to hear about your culture, because we all live together. I said this in my special, when we turn off the lights, we're all the same color, but when we turn it on, we separate ourselves. So we need to stop. So I don't wanna lose that. I want, I want my son to see the struggle that we went through, because I saw her struggle, I see my mom's struggle, and we can't forget that. Because the minute we forget that, we forget our identity. So if they keep asking me if I'm gonna do another joke with my mom's accent, I'm gonna do it until I die. Because it needs to be heard. I love you, Madam President. Thank you for letting me go and over my time. I always wanted to say that. I see that. Every time I watch, Madam President, I'm over my time, I'm sorry. But you know what? My mom came here fifty-three years ago, so I guess I'm gonna deserve a couple more minutes. No, but thank you so much. This means so much to me. And, and like I said, to every Filipino, like, it's just, it's just cool, man. Like, I, I just, I love the reaction that I see on, on everyone's faces, because I know what it means, you know? It's, I know what it means. And I'm sorry, I'm at a loss for words right now, but I know what it means, to just walk around and not be heard or felt or seen. So I wanna make sure that we're all seen. And I love you guys. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Joe Coy.
I love you, Mitch.
I love you too. And you know what?
Love you, Mitch.
You are Hollywood. This guy is Hollywood. This is Hollywood right here. Yes, thank you. And I, I want to, to really elevate Deputy Chief Graham, right here, Deputy Chief Graham. We've got Sergeant Rojas right here, Sergeant Rojas. Training Officer Costales, representing, thank you so much. Our celebration of Filipino History Month will last well beyond today's presentation. The city will be honoring Phil Am History Month with the lighting of City Hall with the colors of the Philippine flag from October sixth through the thirteenth, with one little break on Indigenous Peoples' Day, where it's gonna be turquoise, City Hall. And in closing, please join me in giving a round of applause as we recognize October twenty twenty-two as Filipino-American History Month. So I would like to invite Commissioner Susana Reyes to accept this resolution to commemorate the month and to say a few words. Susana, I haven't seen you, where are you? You're right here. Thank you, Susana.
Thank you.
Susana Reyes, Commissioner, Public Works.
All right. This is such a memorable event. For all of the Filipinos here, thank you so much, dear council members. Thank you, Mitch O'Farrell, Kevin De Leon, Gil Sadio, for your undying support for our Filipino communities. Thank you for all the Filipinos here, our Cababaians, and representing the thousands of Filipino employees that we have here in the city of Los Angeles. And I just wanna give a shout-out to those dedicated people, the dedicated employees here in various, serving in various capacities in our city of Los Angeles. It is important to fully acknowledge the contributions of Filipino-Americans because their role, as well as of many other people of color, have been ignored in the writing, the teaching, and learning of United States history. So we're talking about history, we're not talking about heritage here. This celebration highlights the importance of promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, values that get overlooked, therefore leading to a lack of appreciation and cultural understanding. And that's what impresses me about Joe Coy, about La Face, because they continue to lift that up. Representation is very important. And I think Joe Coy and some members of our city council mentioned that as well. To my fellow Filipino-Americans, this is the time for reflection. This is a time and an opportunity to showcase your achievements and highlight your diverse contributions to the national history and culture. We are going to be here, we're not leaving. We have a place here in American history. Let this month be a time of reflection and remembrance, and a time to renew efforts towards research and examination of our history and culture. Let this celebration open opportunities for all people in our country to learn and appreciate more about Filipino-Americans and their historic contributions to our nation. And to those who haven't had a chance to learn or hear about Filipino-American history, I hope you find time to do so. If you start to look at history with clear eyes, you will be more likely to look at the world with clear eyes as well. In closing, no ethnic group is a monolith. And embracing our histories helps promote understanding and appreciation of all our backgrounds that are what inherently make our community and our workplace strong, diverse, equitable, and inclusive. Happy Filipino-American History Month. And with that, I proudly accept the resolution by City Council.
And Mr. O'Farrell, I do have a few members on the queue.
Thank you so much, and Madam President.
Mr. O'Farrell, I do have a few members on the queue.
This, this presentation would not be complete without the mention of Gigi Galias. Where's Gigi? There she is. Okay, Gigi Galias. She manages my office upstairs and manages my professional life. Without it, I would be a wandering wreck. So Gigi Galias, thank you for nine and a half years of keeping the office together. Thank you so much. Madame Ming Salamat, thank you so much.
Mr. O'Farrell, I have a few members on the queue. Mr. O'Farrell, I have a few members on the queue. Ms. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, and all my colleagues for this very special recognition today. You know, it, Joe, you made me emotional thinking about everything that you were saying, because it's, it's akin to so many of our own stories. When, when you introduced me to your wife Angie, I said, oh, you're Latina. She says, no, I'm Filipino. I said, that's funny, I get the same confusion all the time about myself being, looking more Filipino. Our communities are inextricably linked. And when I think about the tremendous public servants that serve here in the city of Los Angeles, the Filipino-Americans that, whether they wear a uniform, whether they are serving in the health, serving in the healthcare industry, providing those stitches versus keeping us in stitches, the way you do. It's, our, our communities are really, they're kindred, they're, they're very deeply connected. And I go back to even the, as I mentioned earlier, toiling in the fields up in Northern California. We are a community of service, both of our communities, from the Latino community and the Filipino community. And I'm so grateful for that partnership and that kinship. Because I will tell you, it is that together we're gonna help amplify and change the very industries that you speak of, because we are not represented. Communities of color have not ever historically been represented. But you, and the success that you've achieved in, whether it's on Netflix or in a, in a movie production, helps us all, helps all of our voices get lifted. And so I just wanna thank you for being tenacious and, and breaking through that. I also would be remiss if I didn't want, if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge, you know, some of my, some of my closest friends who established a podcast called, that I shared with you earlier, This Filipino-American Life, which also is telling the stories about the titas and the, you know, all the favorite foods and all the, the stories from, from youth that I think are so important to be told, because they mean something to all of us. And I think it's what better connects us all to one another, so that it strengthens the unity of what we need to help make the change that we need to see in our communities. So I wanna thank you all for your dedicated service. Of course, La Face, for being a convener for city employees to be able to have that representation and that voice. It's being amplified through your work and your efforts and your service each and every day. But again, I just, I wanna say thank you all so much for your individual contributions to show what makes us all great in this country, and all the contributions that each of you make. For that, I thank you. Happy Filipino History Month.
Mr. Corretz, followed by Mr. Lee.
Yes, yes.
I, I hate to go over my time one more time.
You need to go, you need to go.
I just wanna say, I love everybody in here. And Council Member Rodriguez. I just wanna, I, I have to shout out Universal and DreamWorks and Ryback for giving me the opportunity to make Easter Sunday. And Steven Spielberg, thank you. Holly Bar, I know this is cheesy, I know it's not an acceptance speech, but if it wasn't for them, I don't think we would have ever had a movie. And for them to put that in the theaters, that was a risk that they were willing to take. They believed in the project, they believed in the story. And, and without those type of leaders that are in Hollywood right now, hopefully they, not hopefully, they will keep the door open for others, because I wanna hear other stories. I wanna hear every other ethnicity out there tell their story. The more stories we hear, like I said, we'll all realize that we're all just the same. And then also on top of that, I'm not married. But this is my best friend in the whole world. This is my son's mommy. And she's also Filipino. And, and this is a moment that, I mean, every step of the way, she's been right next to me. She's, she's my ride or die, and, and she gave me the best gift in the world, which is my son. So, yeah, I just wanna say that, so, I love you guys, thank you.
Mr. Corretz, followed by Mr. Lee.
I'm not sure I really wanted to have to follow that, but...
Just ask for more time, sir, just ask.
Well, it's an honor to be here with you and with the community. The Filipino community is one of the most important and most valued communities in the city of Los Angeles. And I appreciate Mr. O'Farrell's good work and support of the community, and especially with the gateway. I drive down Beverly Boulevard every single day when I come to City Hall, and I smile every time when I see it. So I thank you for that. And I thank all the incredible Filipino employees that we have. I'd like to give a, a particular shout-out to Susana Reyes, who is not only a longtime friend of mine, who's worked with me in the environmental movement for many years, but really an MVP in City Hall, because she's taken on a variety of significant positions and always handled them incredibly well, and was of incredible value to the city. So I'd like to ask everyone to give you a hand as well. And I'd like to thank former staffers, former Filipino staffers. They're still Filipino, they're just not my staffers anymore. I'm not sure if I said that right. Elaine and Audrey De Leon, who were incredible assets to, to my staff. And the last thing I wanna call out, as was noted, is Filipino nurses. We obviously all know the incredible role that was played during COVID, and the people that risked their lives and the people that lost their lives. But I have more of a connection to Filipino nurses because my daughter, almost twenty years ago, got a sudden illness. And one day she was playing soccer, and the next day she was completely paralyzed. And in Children's Hospital for three months. Various things were tried, nothing, nothing solved her situation. But for three months, it was really the Filipina nurses that kept her alive, and the incredible care. And she had some close calls. And I will always remember this. And after three months, they tried a treatment that worked, and she's fully recovered, just got married, has a wonderful life. But it might not have been that. And I'll always have a, a special place in my part, heart for Filipino nurses. And when I see nurses, that's what I see, and that's what I think about. But you're right, we don't see it on television. I see it in my head. And it, it is the reality, it is so important, the role they play. And it should be reflected in Hollywood as well. And hopefully, in, in future years, we will see that. So thank you so much to the community. You're an incredible asset to the city of Los Angeles. And thank you, Mitch, for recognizing the community today.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you to the council members who brought this day forward. Representation, as has been said over and over, is so incredibly important. Mr. Coy, I just wanna thank you personally, not only for the entertainment that you bring to all of us, but for giving me a shout-out, because my street cred just went really up, that people are like, hey, Joe Coy just gave you a shout-out. I'm like, yeah, that's really cool. But, you know, when you were mentioning about the Filipino nurses and, and your relatives coming home, and you noticed that, I laughed when you said, they work these twelve and fourteen-hour days, and they come home and they, they watch, you know, programs about hospitals, and, and, and they don't see themselves. I wasn't laughing at that, I was laughing at the thought of me coming home after my twelve and fourteen-hour days and watching C-SPAN or something, just the ridiculousness of that, that they come home and then continue to do that, and that, that would be the last thing that I would wanna do. But I, I really, I appreciate your message. I appreciate your message today about, you know, having those faces. You know, growing up in the city of L.A., my father came here in nineteen fifty-eight, my mom came here in nineteen sixty-three. They met here in Hollywood. You know, they too were searching for people that, you know, could understand the things and bring a little bit of home back to this foreign place. But, you know, for, when you talk about being recognized as Americans, you know, my mom, who's lived here longer than she ever lived in Korea, always talks about how important it is for her that when people, you know, ask her, you know, about her identity, she always says, I'm an American, you know? Because that's so incredibly important to her. You know, growing up, seeing movies, when I was growing up, high school, you know, I went to high school in the eighties. The movies that came out, when they had Asian characters, they were all sort of caricatures of, you know, Asian, Asian kids. I knew when I saw a movie like Sixteen Candles, I loved the movie, but I know, when I'm going to high school, I know exactly what's gonna happen to me, and what figure is gonna be pointed out to me, and what I'm gonna have to deal with and go through. But lately, we have seen people from all different walks of life just be American. Just talk about their experiences of their families, or just be shown in a way not that's foreign to, you know, the general population of America, but that are people that are just like us. And when you talk about that message about... And when you talk about that message, about talking about our moms, you're right, it's just, it's not about, you know, being a Filipino mom or a Korean-American mom. It's just about being a mom and those stories that we can relate to. So thank you so much for being that, you know, bringing that message and sharing with that all of us today. And thank you to all the La Face members and all the Filipinos that contribute so much to the city of Los Angeles. We could not run the city without you. And Councilman Farrell and Councilman DeLeon, thank you so much for bringing this day forward today for in front of all of us.
Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to be brief, I'll just attach myself to all the comments and my colleagues. But I do want to give a special shout out to Councilmember O'Farrell for, once again, always giving voice to all of the people of the 13th Council District and all of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you very much for this very special presentation, for arranging it. And I want to just add to the comments about representation that Joe Ko and Mr. Steel and others have spoken about. Because Hollywood representation, of course, is vitally important. But so is representation in real life. And so many of the people who are here today represent this community so brilliantly in their success in so many fields. And I want to just take a moment to make a special note of former captain of the North Hollywood Division of the Police Department, who is now the highest-ranking member of the Los Angeles Police Department of Filipino-American background in the entire history of the Los Angeles Police Department. This is a department, one of the most recognized law enforcement agencies in the world, the Los Angeles Police Department. And it is a department made up two-thirds of people of color. And you wouldn't know that if you heard a lot of the dialogue out there about the Los Angeles Police Department. Two-thirds of this department are people of color, and Don Graham is the highest-ranking Filipino-American ever in the history of the Los Angeles Police Department. So thank you, Don, for your service.
So I should be okay then? I should be okay?
Well, I'm just hoping he does his Filipino mother impression for my Filipino mother over there. Thirty-five years a nurse. I know it's shocking.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing this presentation forward. And thank you, all of you, for being here in City Council. I just want to say, Joe, I watch your Netflix special, and one of the segments that cracks me up is how you describe how Filipinos and Mexicans are related. Because when our daughters turn 15, Mexicans have quinceañeras, and Filipinos have debutts. Is that how you pronounce it?
Debu.
Debu. And I thought it was like, the most funniest thing. I don't want to go into it, because it's long.
Please do. I'm giving you extra time, if you don't mind. Feel free.
We're streaming on a government channel, so we got to keep it PG. But anyways, I thought it was just absolutely hysterical. And I just want to say this to you, you are an example of Filipino success. And thank you so much for creating awareness of people of color in this city and in our country, and what it means to represent your culture. I think it's important, especially in the times that we are living right now. We cannot get away, we cannot allow our identities to be erased. And we need to continue to raise awareness and be proud of who we are and where we came from. I think that's what makes America so special and what makes living in Los Angeles so beautiful. So thank you to all of you, to our Filipino friends, for everything you do. You are an example of civic engagement and participation. And again, congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Madam President, there is a request to send items one and two forthwith.
Without objection, that would be the order. And as soon as we get our guests to clear the podium, I'm going to go ahead and start with public comments. So if I call your name, please come on up. Franken, please come, have Anay Castillo, please come on up.
Hi. Sorry for the delay. Thank you for your patience. You're speaking on item 33, and general public comments, you have one minute for each. If I can please have our guest, please lower your voice as you're making your way out, so we can hear public comment.
Thank you. I would also like to say, if you guys can just stay a little and listen to this, because it's very important.
Speaker, can you please address the council?
Hi. Speaker?
Speaker.
Speaker. So, okay, your time's running, please.
You're speaking on item 33 and general public comment.
Yes. Okay. So, just give me one second. I got to get back to... There we go. Item 29. So just, I would really like to know...
So, did you, you signed up for 33, you want to speak on 29?
29, yeah.
Okay, so we've already voted on 29.
No.
But you can talk about it in general public comment.
Okay.
So we'll set the clock for a minute.
Yeah. So I would like to know here, like, with a raise of hands, how many of you have experienced homelessness? This is a serious question. Homelessness is a huge crisis in the Los Angeles County City. The fact that you guys are still trying to work with LSA after you guys have been aware of the fact that they sent back $150 million back to HUD, knowing that we are in a crisis and that we need the money, that people are still in the streets, dying, hungry, they're sick, they need a lot of mental health care. We are in need of a change, and we need you guys to stop working with LSA and start working with people that are actually doing the work out in the streets, and working and interacting face-to-face, having the daily conversations with the people that are struggling. We still have women sleeping in our cars, we have children in cars and tents.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you.
If you can hand it to the sergeant, he'll get it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Next speaker is Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks?
Thank you.
Sacks, you're speaking on items 30 through 34. And then you have general public comment.
Okay, so we'll set the clock for three minutes. Please start with the items.
Thank you. It's two minutes. Now it's three minutes. Thank you. Item 30 refers to some fees being paid, but again, there's no notice of Quimby fees. What happened to the Quimby fees that the City Council used to require from developers that would aid in park for the city? There seems to be no mention of those Quimby fees anymore, and I'm wondering why? Somebody just mentioned something about homelessness. And I'd like to read something that I got from the county that refers to... Oh. Item A4, the county's homeless crisis. Well, if the county's having a homeless crisis, why is it homelessness all of a sudden?
So we seem to be off topic, Mr. Sacks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, outhouse attorney or an in-house attorney? Item 31 refers to sidewalk improvements in Mr. Sadio's district, especially around Wilshire Alvarado and MacArthur Park area. There is a swamp-like condition of people living on the sidewalks. How much money has the city allocated to having these people find affordable housing? But wait a second, there was a big demonstration about housing. What about affordable housing? Why is not included in the City Council's agenda?
Again, can we stick with the items, Mr. Sacks?
I am sticking with the item, Mr. City Attorney. Item 31 refers to sidewalk improvement. Have you been down to Alvarado and Wilshire Boulevard? Have you taken a tour of any of the streets around here, Mr. City Attorney?
Let's get on, let's get on the items.
That's for you. Take a tour of that finger. And then, let's see. Oh, the protest in solidarity with Iran at City Council. Exactly what is the protest about with the solidarity of Iran? Don't they foster terrorist organizations? Isn't the government of the United States trying to stop them from enriching uranium? Isn't that a great concern, Iran and Iraq? Aren't they both major problems for the government of the United States and a lot of other countries? I guess that doesn't matter anymore. So anyway, my public comment. It's too bad Herb Weston isn't, it's ironic but iconic that Herb Weston had to step away after he spent the first term of his three terms here entertaining Mike Kunt dressed as a Grand Wizard for the KKK. How ironic is that? That the City Council of Los Angeles has been the only council in America, the whole United States, that ever had the KKK come in dressed up as a Grand Wizard. And who was that? It's Mike Kunt. He was here, but he left. And somebody said something about real life. Is it real life or real life? Or special effects that we're dealing with? We have to get more efficacy, efficacy about the water shortage that we're having. It's the most severe drought that California, state of California has ever been into, and you keep on building more and more housing.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
The next speaker is Dr. Truth Bay. Is Dr. Truth Bay here?
Yeah, Dr. Truth Bay, do you want to speak?
Dr. Truth Bay, are you going to speak? The items you signed up for are items 33 through 34 and general public comment.
Okay. I have no qualms with honoring any Hollywood anybody, but for Joe Ko to take almost an hour, I hope he's building housing after this with the Filipinos. So 29, homelessness and poverty committee, I know you said you already voted on it, but question is, why are you still working on a regional homeless response team for homelessness?
Yeah, actually, we did vote on that. Go on with items 30 through 34, please.
$150 million. I'm requesting a public COC, CFDI account, I'm doing public comment right now, Fable, I can't hear you.
We'll set you for a minute, then.
Going back to agenda number 31. Don't tell me how to speak.
No, 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 this is not how it's going to work, Dr. Truth Bay, listen. Hold your time. So you can do the...
I'll speak for two minutes.
Okay, so we're going to set you in a minute, and that's it. Go ahead.
Piece of shit. I am tired of coming in here, giving you paperwork that you're not reading. We are looking for a letter of support from every single council member as to sending it to HUD, to Marshafudge, as having Kinda Morious Foundation as the primary COC recipient. That's all I'm asking. I'm not interested in you cutting us off. We are the ones doing the work. Jose Ramirez doesn't even work with you guys. So we want Karen Bass to stay in the congressional office, work with Rick Caruso, who has plans and property to build housing, and I would like a letter of support from every single council member and their homeless deputy to write a letter to HUD concerning the $150 million that was returned. That is egregious. When Wendy Jane Gruel and her son Timothy get to live the best life as a homeless commissioner for LSA and does nothing for eight years of complaints and send back $150 million, there's a problem. District 21, this is the Hunger Games.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Benu McCott. Is he here? Ma'am, can you?
Monday, I need those to return, please. Thank you, Bo. I only read for...
Dr. Truth Bay, please let the next person come up.
Your time is up, we have a speaker right behind you.
Dr. Truth Bay, you're disrupting the meeting. Please be quiet.
Stop talk.
You signed up. Please stop disrupting this meeting. You've signed up for a general public comment, you may begin.
Yes. Well, my name is Benu McCott. I'm here representing myself as a current homeless person and as a homeless person outreach. I have contacted myself, asked Karen Bass personally to help me with the homelessness situation, and I've also spoke with numerous people from LSA who said they had no more funding left for homelessness, and they sent $150 million back. So my question is, for me, what am I supposed to do as a Los Angeles County citizen? What am I supposed to do as far as housing, right now, as I'm sleeping in my car? And shelters is not an option, because I get sexually harassed by men and women. So I would like to know, what am I supposed to do in this current situation, when we have $150 million that we have, we don't know where it's at? And LA Times has exposed LSA for not doing their job, and you guys are still trying to work with them. So we just need answers on where this money's going and how you can help us ask Los Angeles homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeanette Quorker. Jeanette's not here? Okay, that seems to be the last person signed up for public comment, so I will close public comment. Now, members, we're going to go ahead and vote on... Please disrupt, please stop disrupting this meeting, thank you. The next, sergeants, can you please?
Dr. Truth Bay.
Ask Ms. Truth Bay to...
Please stop shouting, you're keeping us from doing our job.
The next, members, we're going to go ahead and vote on items 30 through 34. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 27, call special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, a very significant motion is before us with item 27, and the intent of this motion is to create a citywide office of unarmed response and safety to coordinate and streamline the various innovative approaches to public safety. A new city agency or office will be needed to lead, coordinate, and further develop existing unarmed crises response programs. Circle, as it's known, crises and incident response through community-led engagement is just one of the innovative programs currently being piloted in various parts of the city. In my district, we've already seen the positive impacts of the Circle program in Hollywood. In the first four months since its initial launch in January of this year, Circle diverted more than 500 calls related to homelessness and mental health that went into the 911 Emergency Response Call Center and diverted the response away from uniformed armed police and instead deployed trained service providers to respond with services, support, and the possibility of wellness and case management. In that same time span, Circle was responsible for more than 20,000 proactive positive engagements between service providers and people experiencing homelessness. The program has been so successful in this current fiscal year, this council almost tripled its budget. We are already establishing it in other parts of the city. This is why I introduced a motion today to explore the possibility of having a Circle program in Echo Park, historic Filipino town, and Rampart Village. Imagine the impact it will make when we're able to coordinate and streamline all of these efforts citywide. efforts citywide. In addition to helping the city meet its goal of creating an unarmed model of crises response, a citywide office of unarmed response and safety would allow the Los Angeles Police Department to focus on its core mission of deterring crime. In fact, Chief Moore himself has publicly expressed support for a concept of a citywide office of unarmed response and safety because he knows this frees up more officers to stop gun crime, assaults, and deter crime. It's time for the city to finalize the development of a systemic crises response plan that would send a range of trained unarmed service providers to respond to nonviolent and noncriminal situations instead of law enforcement. I'm confident that in our collective ability to improve upon the public safety model in Los Angeles, to focus police where they are best suited and trained to address, and to treat mental health and substance abuse issues with a skill and response that is most appropriate. I appreciate your attention to this issue and I ask for an I-vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrow. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, colleagues, I just, uh, I, we all know how important these efforts are, but what's even more critically important is our ability to measure the success and the work associated with these new models of public safety deployment. And so, uh, this conversation is long overdue. Uh, one of the items I'm most excited about continuing to give recognition to is the early onset success of the therapeutic mental health bands, which has demonstrated our ability to not only hold the county accountable to providing the critical mental health services and intervention services that will relieve our rescue ambulances from being, uh, held on calls that they are not equipped nor trained to do. Uh, but it is something that has already demonstrated our ability to get the individuals that are facing critical mental health crisis connected to the very treatment beds that we know are going to serve them in a manner that we are just not set up to do. And so, uh, while we have continued to engage in conversations about alternative deployments, what becomes more increasingly important is our ability to measure and have the metrics associated with how these programs are operating. And when they're housed in different areas, whether it's the therapeutic mental health bands, which is being managed and tracked, uh, whose, uh, results are being tracked and managed by the LA City Fire Department, uh, or some of the other deployments that are being held within so many different departments, it's critically important that we have accountability in this because we're talking about several millions of, uh, several, several million dollars that are being associated with these programs. And so, uh, you know, having to house them in a singular location and a singular entity that will be accountable will be important going forward, uh, just for the sake of making sure that we are making a true impact that can be measured and be accountable for greater public safety outcomes. And so with that, I want to thank my colleagues for everyone's effort. I know this is something that we're all very passionate about, uh, and I look forward to our continuing this conversation and advancing this work together. Thank you.
Seeing no other members on the queue list prepared to vote on this item? Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Madam Clerk, where are we now?
Council motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. DeLeón?
Uh, thank you very much, colleagues. This Saturday in the afternoon, uh, up until perhaps eight, nine PM, uh, we have El Mercado, well, we're shutting out York Boulevard in Highland Park from Fifty-first and York Boulevard for a few blocks going east, we'll shut it down. So community restaurants, uh, community organizations will come out, we'll have music, uh, it'll be a, a joyous occasion. So anyone's around Highland Park on York Boulevard, to be specific, we welcome you and love to bring you upstage if you come on down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeón. Any other announcements, Mr. Gakkorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, two announcements. Um, first, tomorrow, Saturday, at LA Valley College, the Los Angeles Police Department will be sponsoring its Women's Hiring Expo from ten AM to four PM. Uh, it's a great opportunity for anybody who is interested, uh, in becoming a Los Angeles police officer, uh, to come and actually take tests on site, uh, interview with department personnel on site. Uh, it, it is a, a great way for us to continue to make the progress that we have been making with LAPD in diversifying its ranks. Uh, it's open to everyone, not just women. If, if, you know, if you're interested in becoming a police officer, come and check it out at Valley College. Uh, but this focus is particularly to try to expedite the entry of more women into the ranks. So, um, very excited about that. It'll be taking place from ten AM to four PM, uh, at LA Valley College. Um, and then also, Madam President, if I may, um, I didn't get a chance to, to do this last week because things got a little hectic on, on Friday, but I just wanted to take a moment, uh, to recognize, um, Morgan Sutton of my office, uh, who has served the people of the East Valley and all of Los Angeles, uh, so extraordinarily well for the last five years. Uh, she started in my office, um, as a caseworker, uh, quickly was given responsibility to take, uh, over neighborhoods as a field deputy and, um, was given some really challenging neighborhoods, uh, to deal with as a field deputy. As happens in all of our field offices, one of the big challenges she confronted was homelessness. She almost immediately, as field deputy, became a subject matter expert in homelessness that people throughout the valley, uh, came to for advice. Um, she was a constant presence in UHRC, uh, and was relied upon by, you know, people who were making decisions about homelessness throughout this city, uh, for the personal experience, the on-the-ground experience she had in trying to, um, assist people in our district. In her first year, I think, uh, in our office, in fact, um, she was personally involved with saving the life of a newborn child, uh, who was, uh, living, uh, homeless in the LA River. And she was able to intervene in that situation and provide, um, uh, safety, uh, for this, uh, this child. So because of her success in all of these areas, she rose to the, um, rose, I shouldn't say rose, she moved over to City Hall, uh, to take on, uh, policy responsibilities and she spearheaded our efforts on homelessness policy, on jobs and economic development in particular, and, and housing policy. She was responsible for shepherding through the extraordinary, um, uh, ramp program, uh, all of the procurement reform that we've been doing here over the last many years. Uh, she got it through to the finish line, the Regional Alliance Marketplace for Procurement, the establishment of the Office of Procurement. Uh, she's been responsible for advancing targeted local hire policy in this city. Um, the completion of the Jedi Zone process that we started so many years ago, we finally got the first one up and running in North Hollywood, um, with, with Morgan's assistant. She guided us through the restaurant beverage program, uh, gauntlet, until we finally got that enacted, and she launched, launched a homelessness multidisciplinary, uh, team pilot in our program, which is already seeing incredible success. As Mr. O'Farrow was just mentioning about his Circle program, it's similar with the, uh, the team that we have in our, our district, which is already helping so many people. Um, and in addition to all that, she also led our internship program and our youth leadership program. So Morgan has really made lasting impact on this city and on so many young people who have, um, had the opportunity to come and work in our office, and, and I couldn't be more grateful to her for all of her years of service. Uh, she has gone on now to serve in a different way. Uh, she's joining the United Way, where she'll continue to work on homelessness issues. She, she'll be the lead, uh, person at the United Way in helping to develop new policy and solutions, uh, on homelessness, uh, particularly, I think, for seniors, uh, for senior homeless population. And, um, so she'll continue to work with all of us in the nonprofit sector to continue to do the work that we're doing to, to save lives and that she has, um, led so ably here. So Morgan, I'm just so incredibly grateful to you for all of your service, and we're all grateful to you for your, for your service for the people of Los Angeles. We wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Gakkorian.
Madam President, under normal circumstances now, I would be presenting a certificate to Morgan, but because Morgan wasn't here to help me to achieve that, it's still upstairs. So, uh, we'll give that to her upstairs.
Sir, Morgan was also in charge of her own certificate. Pretty much. Thank you, Morgan, it's been a pleasure working with you and good luck on your future endeavors.
Members, let me invite you to the most exciting, uh, location this weekend, which will be MacArthur Park. It's just been reopened. Uh, we have invested millions of dollars into restoring it, as you recall. Successfully last year, we moved three hundred and twenty-six people. Since then, all the departments have come together to restore it, and we have a fence up, that fence will be coming down, and we're going to reopen it with the Latin Jazz Music Festival. It's our ninth, uh, event, and it's going to have a great, uh, lineup. We begin with Son Mayor, which is a very popular band and featuring Chewy Perez. It'll be followed by Cold Duck, a cover band from the seventies, uh, my favorite band. Uh, then from there, we will have Susie Hansen with her violin and her, her band. And then following that, we're going to have the extraordinary Grammy-winning legendary Joe Button will fly out from New York and he'll perform for us, he's a mainstay with us. And then finally, we're going to close with Sonora Dinamita and Vilma, and everybody will by then be dancing at MacArthur Park and for the miles surrounding MacArthur Park. So, and all of you will enjoy it. Uh, as I say every year, it's free. If you don't like the show, I'll give you their money back, but it's going to be a free venue and everybody is welcomed. It's our ninth annual Latin Jazz and Music Festival. Thank you.
And remind everyone the date again, Mr. Sadillo?
It is tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Saturday, October eighth. Starts at two o'clock.
October the eighth, tomorrow.
Is that tomorrow?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All day long.
Thank you, Mr. Sadillo.
And I'm here all week.
And all, all day and all night. Okay, seeing no other announcements, members, I'm going to ask all of us to rise for adjourning motions, and I will start with Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, sadly, I have two adjourning memory, uh, motions today to adjourn in the memory of, of two people who died, uh, who were unhoused, and, and sadly, I think they are illustrations of how we need to have better health and human services in our interventions, something that we are not getting enough of. Uh, these two individuals died in the cabin communities in my district. I want to start by adjourning in memory of Desiree Nicole Dahl. Uh, we adjourn in her memory, she passed away on September fifteenth. She was born on February twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-nine, raised in Canoga Park. She attended Fulbright Elementary School and Canoga Park High School. She was a lover of animals and in high school gravitated toward the school's agricultural department and the Future Farmers of America program. Desiree's favorite project was caring for a pig and a sheep, till later participated in the livestock auction as part of the Future Farmers of America Fair. Besides animals, Desiree's main love was her son. She became a mother at twenty years old and was grateful for the support of her parents as she raised her son. Her son was the light of her life, and she enjoyed traveling on vacation with him, sharing many happy memories and good times. She was a kind and generous soul from an early age, was always giving to others. She enjoyed crafting, making custom jewelry and candles to give away as gifts to friends. Desiree's kindness to others was rooted in her understanding of struggle. At the age of nine, she was diagnosed with insulin-dependent diabetes, which required daily insulin shots throughout her life. She struggled to manage this affliction, uh, and with the stress of life and dealing with chronic illness, she sought relief through self-medication, uh, and substance abuse. Although Desiree experienced struggles and experienced homelessness, a year ago, uh, she sought refuge in the Sycamore cabins, which are the cabin, cabin communities behind my district office. She started on her journey to recovery and was working to get her life back on track. She had dreams of opening her own dog rescue and was better managing and, and better managing her diabetes. Desiree was looking forward to eventually moving into a place of her own with her dog, Mi Amore. Sadly though, she passed away due to, excuse me, complications with her diabetes on September fifteenth. She is missed by the many people she has touched and especially by her family. May she rest in peace. And I also wanted to adjourn in the memory of William Hi. He was born, uh, in Macon County, Illinois, in nineteen eighty-two. He graduated from Eisenhower High School and dreamed of being a music producer, but he struggled on and off with challenges related to his mental health in his teenage years. His mental health worsened as he got older, and by the time he was in his late twenties, his psychosis had led him to be diagnosed with bipolar schizophrenia. Six years ago, impulsively, he boarded a Greyhound bus and without any plans or heads up to his family, he moved out here to Los Angeles. He was new to the city, he didn't know anyone, and shortly after arriving, he found himself living unsheltered on our streets. He moved from shelter to shelter, district to district. Eventually, he found his way into the Sunflower Cabin Community, which is in Tarzana in my district, right off the Orange Line. His family, uh, tried to get him to come back home, but each attempt was unsuccessful. His father pleaded with the court to grant a power of attorney or conservatorship so that his family could better care for their adult son, but was unsuccessful. And our, our cabin communities, our interventions, they are not set up to deal with these kind of mental health challenges, but we don't have the places that the county should be providing for people like this to go to. And sadly, uh, William passed away just recently, September twenty-fifth, due to his poor health. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Tom Smith, an artist from my district, a veteran, chess player, and family man. Tom was born January ninth, nineteen forty, in Iowa City, Iowa. He was one of two children. Tom began studying cartooning when he was just ten years old. After his neighbor, Dick Spencer the Second, who taught editorial cartooning at the University of Iowa, agreed to tutor him. Three years later, at the age of thirteen, he was drawing cartoons for the Daily Iowan. Tom was a proud Eagle Scout and a devout Catholic, earning both his Eagle Scout rank and acolyte position at age fourteen. He attended City High School in Iowa City and graduated in nineteen fifty-seven, where he wrote his senior thesis on animated cartooning. Tom continued pursuing his passion for cartooning at the University of Iowa for two years, and then moved to Southern California, where he studied cartooning at Shannard Art Institute, which is now CalArts. Tom took a break from cartooning and valiantly served in the US Marine Corps from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty-two. Semper Fi. In nineteen eighty-eight, Tom moved his family to Sunland Tahunga, where he spent his last thirty-four years. And in Sunland Tahunga, time, Tom thrived as an artist. His cartoons could be found up and down Foothill Boulevard, especially during the holiday season. In fact, he painted his last cartoon at Kim Pet, at Kim's Pet Place in Sunland Tahunga two weeks before his passing. But he also completed occasional portraits of some of his favorite singers, including John Lennon, which was actually signed by John Lennon. According to Tom's daughter, Don D. Smith, John Lennon signed it and said, "The paint", quote, "The painting was so well done, was done so well, I thought it was a picture." When he wasn't painting, Tom enjoyed playing competitive chess and spending time with his family, regularly watching Western classics featuring Roy Rogers and John Wayne with them. Levi Ponce, who is a well-known artist and friend of Tom's, who's a local artist from the community of Bacoima, had this to say about him. Quote, "Tom Smith, in life and in art, transcended it all, be it race, creed, language, social status, politics, or age." Tom passed away on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. He is survived by his wife, Mary, uh, Mary K. Smith, and their children, Don D. Smith, Le, uh, Leonardo Smith, Anne Heskey, and Pamela Hershey, uh, and their grandchildren, Sean Smith and Andre Smith. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Price?
Members, I ask that we adjourn this meeting in the memory of Reverend Gamiel Mansfield Collins, a leader in the civil rights movement on the West Coast, a faithful confidant of Martin Luther King Jr., and one of the founding members of the Western Christian Leadership Conference. Born in Colorado in September twenty, on September twenty-seventh, nineteen twenty, Reverend Collins and his family moved to Los Angeles in nineteen thirty-five. He attended Polytech High School, Polytechnic High School with Mayor Tom Bradley, uh, and followed on with the attending the University of Southern California. In nineteen forty-three, he was drafted into the Arm- In 1943, he was drafted into the Armed Forces and was assigned to the 204th Quartermaster Unit. He attended flight school in Tuskegee, Alabama, and became the first member of his class to fly solo. During his time in Tuskegee, he became an activist demanding equal rights for black flight officers. When he returned to Los Angeles, he served as the assistant pastor and musical director at the Neighborhood Community Church, located right here on East 43rd Street and 47th Street in my district. In 1963, Reverend Collins helped organize the famous Los Angeles Freedom Rally, which drew more than 40,000 people to Wrigley Field in South LA to hear Dr. Martin Luther King speak. This was before the March on Washington. In 1965, he served as the founding board member and advisor to his daughter Lisa Collins in establishing the LA Focus newspaper, which has become one of the city's preeminent African-American community publications. Pastor Collins leaves behind his wife, four sons, including my friend Mansfield Collins, whom I attended junior high school with back in the day. But he passed peacefully in his sleep on September 23, 22. Only a few days shy is of his 102nd birthday. May Reverend Collins rest in peace. Also, Madam President, I have adjourned from Councilwoman Hutt for... To adjourn the meeting in memory of Ms. Paula K. Rains. She passed away, served in the community, was an activist, and will be well remembered. May she also rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeLeón?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, it's with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Gerardo Ambrosio. Gerardo was born on December 12, 1991, in Oaxaca, Mexico. In 2015, like so many members of our families did at one time, he made the journey to the United States of America to pursue his American dream. And as an only child, his hope was to be able to provide for his family back home in Oaxaca, where they were struggling with the recent death of his mother back in 2012. And Gerardo fulfilled that personal commitment up until earlier this year, when he also lost his father. Gerardo began working for BMC Landscaping back in 2016. And as many of us know, BMC Landscaping is a city contracted company hired to maintain, among other locations around the city, the entire center median of Huntington Drive that stretches through the heart of El Sereno. And by all accounts, he was a well-liked individual among his crew and coworkers, and he was a dedicated, hard worker. Gerardo had a love for off-roading, for video gaming, and for the beautiful game of football, especially Real Madrid. And more than anything, Gerardo was a loving father to his beautiful son, who shared his name and who spoke about... who he spoke about all the time. Gerardo was just getting started in life, and I was just listening to Councilmember Karen Price's adjournment in memory of Reverend Collins. And he lived 102 years of incredible life. Gerardo lived 30 years, and it just shows you the cruel fate of life and the way life works with each and every one of us. Sadly, while working on Huntington Drive last week, that median in El Sereno, he was struck and killed by a car that hopped the median. It happened in the early afternoon, and the driver was under the influence, which means the tragic accident was completely avoidable. A tragic accident and a beautiful soul gone too soon, and a little boy now without a father who deeply loved him. My deepest condolences go to the mother of his child, Jessica Corrales, and their young son, Gerardo Eduardo Ambrosio, and to his friends and whose lives he touched. There are no words that can ever fill the void of the... what he leaves, you know, in the life of his son, Gerard. But I want Gerard Gerardo to know that he's... when he's older, and can understand that this entire city council body together joined in the mourning of the loss of his father and remember him as a good man that he was. A contractor, a worker with a contracted service with the city of LA, doing his job, trying to keep our city clean and beautiful. Again, a loss, a life of a loss, much too soon by an individual who was beyond highly irresponsible, a drunk driver in plain daylight in the afternoon. Gerardo will be greatly missed, and may he rest in peace, and his family and friends find comfort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeón. This is such a senseless and tragic, tragic story. I read this in the newspaper, and I see that you have a GoFund.
Yeah.
So I would encourage anybody who's listening or seeing this meeting today, this is a family that is desperately in need of funds to be able to give them a burial. So if we can share your... if you don't mind sharing with us...
Please, yes.
...the GoFund information, so we can post it on our social media. I would certainly do that.
Thank you, Madam President.
May he rest in peace. I read about this. It's absolutely sad and absolutely just senseless. And our condolences go out to his entire family. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other adjourned motions? Seeing no others, our meeting is adjourned.